I'll call this meeting of the Clackamas County Commission to order and invite you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items before us, first, before we get to the reason all our visitors are here, but I don't think they will take too long. And County Council is here, this is for reading and adoption of a previously approved ZDO ordinance. And it is ZDO 232 for Southeast 172nd Avenue and 190th Drive. The corridor management plan, although on the title, I first looked at this, it looks like Dr. Corridor Management, but I see that's 190th Drive. And we have Rhett Tatum here with County Council to explain this item.
Good morning, Board. The purpose of ZDO 232 is to adopt this 172nd Avenue and 190th Drive corridor management plan. Currently, 172nd Avenue and 190th Drive lack the necessary capacity for the anticipated future development in that area. Accordingly, our planning staff met with stakeholders from Damascus, Gresham, and Happy Valley and Metro over about an 18th month planning period to put together this corridor management plan and come up with preferred routes, the idea being that by planning now, we could preserve the necessary easements and reduce future implementation costs. The ordinance works by amending Chapter 5 of the comprehensive plan to adopt the corridor management plan by reference, and then amending Sections 200 and 1,007 of the county zoning and development ordinance to allow for cycle tracks, which are a design element called for in the corridor management plan. Following a public hearing on January 19th, the Board voted unanimously to approve this corridor management plan and the ordinance without changes. And I'm available for any questions, and I know planning staff is in the audience if you have any technical questions or questions about the process the county used.
Are there any clarifying questions on this item that we heard on December 14th? Hearing none? Then I would ask for a motion to read this by title only.
Madam Chair, I move we read zoning and development ordinance number 232 by title only.
I will second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Lininger that we read the ZDO ordinance 232 by title only. All those in favor, is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, and with that, I will ask the clerk to read ZDO 232 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 232, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Clackamas County comprehensive plan and Section 201,007 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance.
Then I would ask for a motion to adopt this.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 232, amending Chapter 5 of the Clackamas County comprehensive plan and Section 201,007 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance as previously approved at January 19th, 2012 public hearing.
And I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 232, amending these parts of the code. Is there any other discussion? I guess I have a clarifying question. It says that we-
That was an error. That's my mistake.
December 14th.
Yeah, the hearing was on January 19th.
The hearing was on January 19th.
And that was in the motion, so it was correct.
Yeah, it was correct in the motion, when we previously said it was heard on December 14th, that was in error, it was January 19th. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? No one? Passes unanimously. And the second item that we have is a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for Pacific Rock Products. And again, Mr. Tatum from County Council will explain this one.
This is an order approving application Z03311CP and Z033211ZAP. Just as background, applicants Pacific Rock Products operate a gravel mine on the east side of South Barlow Road, just south of Highway 99, and would like to begin Phase 3 of their operation, which would be on the west side of South Barlow Road. This order allows us by amending the county comprehensive plan to add the Phase 3 site to the county's list of significant aggregate resources, and to apply a mineral and aggregate overlay zone to the property, so that they can then come and get the necessary development permits to actually begin mining. Quality and quantity of the gravel available and other characteristics of the site either meet or well exceed the Goal 5 requirements to add it to our list of Goal 5 inventories. Additionally, the applicants will mitigate conflicts by using a conveyor belt to transport gravel under the road, so there's no increased transportation impacts, using mining techniques that suppress dust, and sound suppression techniques, berms, and landscaping to mitigate any noise that might exceed DEQ noise regulations. Following a public hearing on January 11th, the Board voted unanimously to approve the application and recommend, and, sorry, to approve the application and recommended conditions without modification. Again, available for clarifying questions, as is staff.
Are there any clarifying questions, anyone has of staff on this, which we heard on January 11th? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt the Board order for the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for Pacific Rock Products as previously approved at the January 11th, 2012 land use hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Damon and seconded by Commissioner Bernard that we adopt the Board order for the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change for Pacific Rock Products as previously approved. Is there other, any discussion on this item?
Actually, I just want to make the comment, just to be, make sure I follow the proper protocol. I was absent for the January 11th meeting, is it, would it be advised abstain from this or not? I'll ask legal counsel.
I can provide the advice that previous legal counsel have given, and I think is accurate. You're certainly welcome to vote. The order today is just to ensure that staff, that the order reflects what was sort of recommended at that public hearing, so, which is a different issue from whether or not you agree that the application meets the criteria under the state regulations or county zoning and development ordinance, but it would be your personal preference.
Is there any other discussion? And I just want to comment that when we did hear this, I was very impressed with this applicant, and as was stated, they have gone out of their way to mitigate, as you said, and the one thing you didn't mention was also to work with their adjoining neighbors or anyone else who might be impacted. This is a very, very responsible model operation for rock and aggregate, so, very impressed with them. So, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, 5-1. And that brings, 5-0. Why do I want to say that? I keep wanting to add another person. 5 to 0. And that brings us to our presentation of the day, which is recognition of winners of the youth media contest from the Open Minds, Open Doors campaign, and I believe Cindy Becker is here, yes, with Gretchen Landgraf. And you can come to here and- From Health Housing and Human Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm really happy to be here again today. We are bringing you, excuse me, the youth version of the Open Minds, Open Doors campaign. As you know, we kicked off the Open Minds, Open Doors campaign last year in May 2011 to fight the stigma around mental health, excuse me, mental illness and addictions, so that people will come out and seek help early on, and so that people will be able to live successfully in their communities, for them and their families. We have had some great successes in the campaign. We've been getting more and more people involved in it. We've been running ads on TV and radio, and have had over $100,000 in advertising time donated to us through our media partners, Pamplin Media and KGW, so that's been really positive. But along with just increasing general public awareness, there were some populations that we really wanted to focus on, and the youth population was one of those. We think the success of this campaign is when it's really owned by the people who live in our county, that it's not primarily under just, under county government, but it's the residents who live here who really care about it and who really own it. And so, we held a youth media contest, and Gretchen Landgraf, excuse me, she coordinated that, and I just want to make a comment about Gretchen. Gretchen came to us as a graduate intern a couple of years ago, and we were very impressed with her work, and she applied for a job and is now a county employee. So, it's, again, bringing up some young leaders in our organization is also really important. So, anyway, back to the media contest, we held the media contest in the fall, and we received a lot of great entries, including a video, a song, a mural, a drawing, and two essays. Part and parcel of the video, excuse me, of the youth contest was recognition, and we had a little enticement about some gift cards for Apple products. And so, I think that kind of raised some of the excitement about that. So, we had some great entries, and we're very excited about it, and so we'd like to take the opportunity today to introduce these folks to you and to recognize them. We're also planning on taking their great work and putting it on our website, well, actually, the Open Minds, Open Doors website, and making sure that other people are getting the benefit of their great work. So, I would like to start with honorable mentions. Youth move peer drop-in center and their change mural. Is somebody here from that? No, okay. Laura Lowry, is Laura here? From Trillium's Children Family Home, and the essay, "Rise Up With Depression." Thank you very much. Is Shelby here? Okay. Shelby Davis had an essay, "Who's Really Hiding the Darkness?" And I just, I really, when we get these up on our site, I really hope you'll read them, they're incredibly moving. They just, they really, they say it all. So, third place, Betty Smith and her sketch, "Everyone Has Skeletons in the Closet." Thank you very much, Betty. And Betty was a recipient of a $250 Apple card, so we decided not to buy the products, we decided that people needed to have their own choices, so we gave you some card there. Our second place is Avin Firth and her song, "Look At Me." Again, incredibly moving, and Avin received a $500 Apple gift card. And first place goes to Canby High School Youth Advisory Board and their video, "Talk About It: Canby High School Prescription Drug Abuse," and they received a $1,000 Apple card. So, if we could have a round of applause for all of them. And I do have to tell you, about a year ago, I chatted with the former superintendent of Canby, and he was talking about this whole Talk About It campaign, and I said, "Well, can we steal that for the county? Because we love Talk About It, we just, you know, it just gets people to the table." So, I want to thank you for that as well, and I don't think you get any rights, though additional rights for it, but thank you very much for that. But these kids and the people that surround them are just really dedicated to this, and we're so proud of them, and hopefully we'll get a chance to have a picture at the end of this, but I wanted to present them to you and to the community and ask if you have any questions or comments.
Questions, comments?
I just want to go, I just want to thank you for taking time out of your day to come show us here in the county and all the people on television, and I think sometimes it's as many as 30,000 people, as some of the folks here who come regularly to testify have known, that this is a really important issue, and you're being leaders in the arena of creativity and the arts and design and media when you do this, but you're also being leaders in a really important social movement that is happening in this county and around our country about the fact that mental illness and addiction issues are medical issues that we should take care of and work with and can deal with in a really positive, productive way, just like, you know, a broken finger is something that you take care of and you work through in a positive and productive way, and your leadership saying that, you know, smart, attractive, awesome, young people understand that, so everybody talk about it, is exactly the message that I think more people need to hear, and thank you for being here and for making that clear to our community.
Other comments?
I just want to add that it's nice to see that model citizens come in all ages, so thank you for taking an interest at such a, at a young stage of your life and doing good things, so it's admirable. Congratulations.
I was just going to say, I think that, well, first, thank you, I mean, this is really exciting. Do we get to see the video here as a part of our meeting, or is that going to be up on the website?
It's going to be up on the website, and we'll let you all know.
I'm excited to see the video and read the essays, and is the song recorded? Is that something that'll be on the, excellent, okay, that's awesome. I understand the importance of the peer-to-peer aspect of this, I think it's really important that we have youth talking to youth and being able to pave the way to open up opportunities for youth to talk about these really difficult issues, and so thank you for being youth leaders in that way.
Commissioner Bernard?
I would love to hear the song right now, but I wouldn't put you on the spot. You know, the county's come a long way. When we got here, we were closing clinics, and we had the opportunity, under Cindy's leadership, to actually visit two new facilities, one for mental health and one for physical health, basically, which are in the Sunnyside area. I'm very impressed by the fact that, you know, we've, through our goals, have looked at helping those most vulnerable, and those people who use those services, who often don't have health insurance, or might end up in our jail, actually can be assessed and determine what kind of needs they really have. So, I think we've come a long way in the last three years from where we started, and I'm very excited about the direction. I think we should all be proud as that, with Cindy's work and staff, that we have taken a new direction, and that these clinics will really provide outstanding service. And I thought that the imagination in both sites, how we address people who come in the door, was incredible. I'm very excited, so I look forward to visiting the clinics when they actually open and when the murals are done, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Well, I will echo a lot of what my Commissioners have said here, really appreciate everything that you've done and the work with this campaign. It's important because I think we're increasingly coming to realize at a deep level that mental illness and mental issues are not something that happen to those people over there, it's something that touches every family at some time or another, and in fact, there are very few individuals who make it through a whole lifetime and are never touched by things like depression or other anxieties or issues that make it difficult for them, that are challenging for people to work through. It is a common part of the human condition, and particularly for things, when I hear that several of these are dealing with depression, because depression by its very nature is a withdrawing kind of thing, where people tend to blame themselves, not reach out for help, and cocoon into a dark place. And so, these are particular, excuse me, particularly important topics to get out in the open and talk about, and give everyone permission to approach services and assistance when they need it. So, extremely important work that you do, and that you have contributed to your community. And with- Do you have something else? And with that, I think we're going to walk over to the mural over here, it's not a mural, mosaic, for a photo opportunity. So, anyone who is here to participate in this, please meet us over at the mosaic. going to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Bernard and go and greet them at the reception, and so will Commissioner Lininger. And we will be, rejoin you shortly. Want to sit here or there?
No.
This is fine.
He should stay there, his name's there.
Well, the next item on the agenda is discussion items, we have none, so we're going to move on to citizen communication. I'm going to call two people up at a time. Vicky Baker and Les Poole are up first, and Vicky, you're first. And please give us your name and address, and thank you, Vicky, this is your first time coming here, we appreciate you coming.
Thank you. My name's Vicky Baker, and I live in the Malala area. I know that you have an agenda today, and we have a time restraint, so I'm hoping that I can convey to you how devastating our story has been to us. It has added an enormous amount of stress in our ability to sell our home and downsize as we face retirement. We purchased our home in 1997. At that time, we made a trip to the county offices to do our due diligence. The property was going to have a lot line adjustment done as a condition of sale. We were told the sellers had been to the county, they had gotten the information as to what had to be done to do this. Yet, in 2010, we discovered that our property had become an illegal lot of record. We lost the sale of our home at that time due to this situation. We were not able to protect ourselves from this because the county was negligent in its duty to inform us. Since 1997, the county allowed the two-acre piece of property that was removed from ours illegally to be sold separately. The new owner applied for and received permits to make improvements, never being told his property was an illegal lot. The county has greatly profited from this situation through permits and taxes, and has made no allowances for their responsibility. In 1997, the ability of an owner to go through the records office to separate a tax lot, which is what created our problem, has been eliminated. If the county can see that they have a loophole that has allowed problems to arise, they need to be held accountable. We need a way to fix the status of our property. In our case, all dwellings are legal. Please work in the spirit of public trust for which you were elected to help property owners instead of hindering us with rhetoric, red tape, and excuses.
So, Vicky, would you give us your information? We have it on the card, and we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
In fact, if we could get a copy of your testimony, that might help too, as we try to flesh this out.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just have one question of staff, is this related to the other gentleman that spoke about the lot he was being taxed for and an easement that was given? This isn't the same property, is it?
We're out in South County on Nolansbridge Road, I don't know.
Okay. I don't believe it is, I remember that one from a few weeks ago, I don't think it's the same thing. All right, but we'll have to check, obviously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in all that way.
See what we can do. Les?
Les Poole of Grove. Imagine why I'm here. I'm here because I keep getting a lot of phone calls, lots of emails, and lots of the same issues. Issue number one is that there's a petition out there for a vote on light rail, it's also got a restriction on the ability to do some of the planning for it, it's not specific to Milwaukee Light Rail, but that petition has been legally challenged, and it's in a judge's hands, and folks are getting frustrated because there doesn't seem to be any action on it. Obviously, a judge does not have to act politically, but I can assure you that the voters and the people out there are feeling slighted, and that's no reflection of the Commissioners here, that's just a general announcement. A second general announcement I'd like to make that's legal in nature, some of you may know that yesterday, I filed a appeal with Land Use Board of Appeals, a Luba appeal as it's called, and I did that challenging the design of the bridge and massive overpass at Kellogg Lake that is planned for the last segment of light rail. And obviously, regardless of what happens with that appeal, anyone that were to look at what I presented to them with the advice of an attorney would easily find that there's some serious problems there, and that everything that I've shared with you and the city of Milwaukee and TriMet and Metro, a lot of it falling on deaf ears, but not all of it. Milwaukee and Trimet and Metro, a lot of it falling on deaf ears, but not all of it, we've reached a point now where those things are coming true. And whether or not the citizens get a right to vote on these projects doesn't change the fact that the economy is flat. We just heard yesterday that the federal government has got concerns about how much money they're going to put into some of these big projects. And we've heard over and over from Trimet and others that it's going to Park Avenue. We're going to build all the way into Oak Grove. It's a done deal. The first time I heard it was a done deal was in 2004. That's been over seven years. I'll close with a question. There's $25 million that needs to be put on the agenda. When will that happen? Can we get some discussion on that and on the petition situation at the close of the meeting from the commissioners? I'd appreciate it and others would too. Thank you.
Good timing. Thank you. Yvonne Lazarus and Eugene Schoenhite. And Yvonne, you'll be first.
Okay, thank you. My name is Yvonne Lazarus and I live in Oak Grove. I'm here to talk about the vote today to all of you people out in TV land. The occurrences that are happening right now, I cannot even believe. I cannot believe whether we get this on the ballot in May or we get it on the ballot in November. That isn't the point. The point is a constitutional right. We have the right to vote. I don't care if you're voting for it or against it. We have a right to vote. I want you to get a pen and paper. And I'm going to count to five, so run everybody out there because I'm going to give you our congressman's phone number. And I want you people to call him. I want you people who have computers to get his address and write him. His phone number is 503-588-9100. It's important that we don't lose the vote. It's very important. That's it. That's all I have to say.
One question. What's the name of the congressman they're calling?
Kurt Trader.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Eugene Schoenhite from the Oak Grove area. Of course, my address is always listed. I'd like to start out with a question here. And I'm not always able to attend, you know, most of your meetings. I mean, we have, you know, people at work to do. But my question is, have you adopted the Park Avenue Station Plan?
No.
No. No. Okay. And I'll change what I have to say here. I basically attended the Park Avenue Station Plan, the public meeting that was held at the Elks. This was a couple of months ago, I believe in December. And about 80 to 90 percent of the people attending it basically opposed the plan. Last week, you had a speaker from the Mobile Village on Courtney Avenue, and she was concerned about a part of the plan where a street was running down, you know, it was going right through the middle of her housing area. And she just, you know, this was on the plan. A lot of times, I've heard you, Mr. Bernard, you say that, well, there are only lines on a map. But if you accept this plan, you know, the question is, why would you be accepting it? You know, the consultant has obviously done, is doing a bad job here, that they have not, you know, followed, you know, what the public wants. So, why would you, you know, accept this plan, you know, in the future, as you know, when you get around to it? And I think that'll cover it for now.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Libby Wentz and Mac Woods. So, Libby, you're up first. And please give us your name and address and thank you for coming.
Excuse me. My name's Libby Wentz and I'm in Gladstone. My address is on record. I've said it before. For a moment this morning, I thought I was at a Clackamas Commissioners Meeting. There's Commissioner Lenninger and Commissioner Lehan and you, Commissioner Bernard's. I did not see you, Commissioner Damon, or you, Paul Savas, but I looked around and I might have missed you. Then I remembered I was actually downtown in the Metro Building at the J-PAC Meeting. I'd gone down there to find out, to wait and hear what would be said about the Citizens' Rail Initiatives in Clackamas County. And not a lot was said about them, but I guess they are watching. And I can't help but wonder if that isn't part of the reason why we're having a problem getting one of the initiatives out into the people. Solidarity is a fine thing at appropriate times. And unfortunately, solidarity with the Metro Agenda, and it said Metro Agenda right at the top of the paper, which kind of made me snicker, is not in the best interest of Clackamas County. I would rather see the millions and millions of dollars being siphoned from Clackamas County, spent in Clackamas County for uses our citizens find important and worthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Libby.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Mac Woods. Yeah, I live in Canby. You know me pretty well. And I really had a question. Actually, I wasn't, didn't know for sure if I was going to say anything, but if I did, it was going to be about a different subject entirely. But I changed my mind particularly after hearing this lady right here from somewhere in Clackamas County. I'm a Realtor. I never met this lady before in my life until today, first time. I have to tell you, my friends, some things need to change in Clackamas County big time. And why, what is it the commissioners don't see? You make them rules that they go by down there at the Planning Board. Every one of those rules comes from the commissioner's approval. What is it you don't see, particularly when you take advantage of elderly people? Is it a, I wish, I really wish Ann and Charlotte was here because I'd like to talk to them personally, as well as you, Mr. Bernard, with respect. But to get you to open your eyes to what the public is saying, what we have to deal with out in the county, I'm talking about property owners. I could fill this room up with people just like this lady, whatever her name was. And I think I might do that. I think I could write a book and make a lot of money just by publishing their personal stories. I'm glad to see you back, Ms. Lenninger. Thank you. We wanted to talk to you about what's going on. And I hate to waste my time repeating because you wasn't here. So, I'm thinking about filling this room up with property owners that's had the similar things happen to them out in the county with their property, how their money's being used. We question it. The whole county voters is questioning what you're doing. For goodness sakes, is it too much to honor the public that's put you in these positions? I just want some honesty, some truthfulness and reality. You're putting us in bankruptcy. Do you not know that, Ms. Lenninger? Mr. Bernard? Charlotte's not here. Maybe hopefully she'll watch this. And that's a good thing. Things getting out on your internet station, the elderly folks like Ms. Krailjag was here last night, she's passing the word and it's spreading like a wildfire so the public can see your heart. And speaking of you, Mr. Bernard, you said you had a heart. I'm asking you to spend a little time, as much time as you spent over there in the jail. And I don't know if your qualifications, if you're psycho qualified or not to deal with the crooks, but some of them are in there because they need to be there to protect the public from them. So, let well enough alone, waste your time on doing something constructive. We'd appreciate it. And I don't want to sound disrespectful, but there's a lot I don't know about. And I want to know the truth. I'm getting fed up with hearsay stories, but I can bring a truckload of volunteers in to tell you what you're doing to our property. It's that LCDC stuff and it's a spinoff of Eckley. For goodness sakes, we want to represent Clackamas County, not some foreign country. Thank you.
Actually, Mac, I wanted to say something to you.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to thank you for attending the Veterans Committee Meeting. You have had a long life serving, you know, in the military and I appreciate your comments and look forward to attending future meetings. This is a group we're just starting. We're looking at bylaws and our goals and missions and I appreciated your input.
Thank you. And I learned something that you probably don't know. You want to look at that real closely. And my reason for saying that, the gentleman is, I don't know if I should repeat his name or setting to your right. You know who I'm talking about. First name is Keith. I can give you his last.
Okay.
He indicated his son was on a Tyconderoga and he claimed it be a destroyer. He couldn't be further from right. I know Navy. Tyconderoga's an aircraft carrier. I asked him a few more questions to question his ability of honesty. You might want to ask for his DD-214. Same way with the gentleman, you know, Don, I don't get his names. But, and I asked him if he knew another gentleman and he does. We got a veterans' office just down the street, right down here. Let me tell you, the veterans are not being neglected. You got a lot of them that claim to be veterans. They're wolf and sheep clothing, trying to feed off the fat of the lamb and they're not qualified. Ask for the 214, that'll give it all. And I can tell in a minute, talking to him, who's real and who's not. Thank you though for the compliment, Mr. Bernard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mac.
And I have no other, so we'll move on to Commissioner Communication. Who would like to start?
Oh, the consent agenda.
Right, Mr. Consent Agenda.
Consent. Oh, excuse me. I'd like to ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Under Health Housing and Human Services, we have approval of a professional technical and consultant service contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health Care for Mental Health Promotion Program, for the Mental Health Promotion Program. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, we have a board order adopting the vacation of Track A and adjoining Public Strip, a public road to Wilsonville Heights Platte Number 1361. Under elected officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes. And under Technology Services, we have approval of the ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement, Contract 2876 with the State of Oregon Department of Revenue. And that completes the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Commissioner Bernard, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hary, none. Motion carries. Next item is Commissioner Communication. And again, who would like to start?
I can start.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of things. So, first, I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time to come out to our transportation system plan meetings last week. We had one in the Milwaukee area, one in Eagle Creek, and one out in Malala. And I don't have a number off the top of my head about how many folks attended, but they were well-attended meetings. And our transportation system planning process continues to go on. And so, check out the website and stay tuned. The second is, I just wanted to let people know there's going to be a community meeting up in Welch's at the Resort at the Mountain on Saturday at 9:30, this coming Saturday, February 11th, to discuss the future of the Dorman Center and the land surrounding the Dorman Center and also get an update on the Hoodland Women's Club Community Center project that's occurring in Welch's. So, I'll be up there for that and I just want to make sure people know that that opportunity is available. My last thing is my community of the week. And Mac, you'll be pleased that it's Canby. So, I wanted to give a shout out to Canby. I think that if you haven't been out to Canby, I really encourage you to drive, to get off of 99 and onto Main Street and into the side streets of Canby. It's a beautiful prosperous community. The business that I'd like to highlight is Puddin River Chocolates, in part just because I like to say the name, but in part because it's just a, it's a very nice small business in Canby. They ship chocolates all over the United States and really lovely marzipan. And the volunteer organization in Canby that I'd like to give a kudos to is the Rotary Club. I went to the Rotary Club luncheon there with Mayor Carson and I was very impressed with the membership, with the public service projects that they attend to. Rotary Club is something that's important to me in part because of their international peace and justice program that is part of my background. And so, thank you Rotary Club of Canby for all your good work.
No.
I'll talk with you.
She'll talk you out.
I'll talk with you afterwards, Mac.
Commissioner, Ann?
Sure, I would love to go. So, yesterday, I was at a community meeting in the evening and it happened that a couple of candidates for the board were speaking at the meeting and it was interesting and productive. And it occurred to me during the meeting that as people are putting themselves forward to either remain on the board or to unseat people who are currently on the board, there may be an inclination to depict the work that's been going on here as nothing happening. Now, I know that there are reasonable disagreements about certain policy decisions and I honor and respect that. But I also want to note that as someone who's been working hard trying to do what I think is best for the community, and I know that not everyone in this room agrees that, you know, with the things that I think are a good idea, there have been some wonderful accomplishments, in my view, in the last couple of years and in the last year with the people on this board. And I want to highlight some of them for you. One is this Access to Healthcare Initiative that we've been working on for a couple of years is going to result in the launch in the next month of a new mental health crisis center and a new primary care clinic and is supporting some other healthcare clinics. And that's going to, when they're all up and running, going to enable 13,000 more people a year to get physical health, mental health, or addiction recovery services, which I think is extremely exciting and I, wow, what a great thing with these young people here today. In the last three years, we've invested $3.4 million in domestic violence prevention and child abuse prevention services. And that's new money that we advocated for because it's really important. And of course, you know, there have been some tragic events that show the need for that in our community. We've been investing in key systems to provide the services that businesses need in order to thrive. We are investing in, we got a big federal grant to support installation of broadband fiber in the county. And that fiber is also going to let public agencies connect more cheaply to high-speed internet access at an estimated savings of $576,000, according to our staff per year. So, over the 20-year life of that project, the staff estimate that that'll save public agencies, including schools, $11.52 million. The potential acquisition of this outfall site on the Westland side of the Blue Heron facility that will enable us to secure some great outfall sites for mixing wastewater that's been cleaned and treated back into the river could save as much as $80 million over the course of the next 20 years, I believe it is. We've also been working hard to streamline requirements to be a better partner to business. And I'm so glad that Mr. Langdon is here because thanks to your good advocacy and teamwork from around the county and other people who have mobile vending carts and teamwork that involved Commissioner Damon and Commissioner Savas, a new ordinance has been passed that really streamlines and narrows the kinds of hurdles that mobile vending units have to surmount before they can start those businesses. And we're now also looking at streamlining the commercial development code so that we can incorporate expertise from people who are professionals in the field to meet, you know, sustainability goals and other good goals in a way that is, allows private sector experts to use expertise to get there in a better way than having it all be prescribed from the county government. So, I'm excited about that. And then last of all, Commissioner Savas and I have had a lot of fun and I think some really positive teamwork with the rest of the board too on some efforts to improve the financial stewardship in the county. And that includes instituting regular finance meetings, requiring our cost-benefit analysis, fiscal impact statement on proposals for new programs, asking for hard copies of financial statements to receive regularly, developing a reserves and contingency policy that is going to be before the board apparently next week because it wasn't here this week, but that we've looked at and the team has agreed, looks good. And so, we're looking to formally put that down. And then implementing lean, we've all been working on implementing lean process improvements throughout the organization that have saved at least $425,000 already so that money can be directed to highest and best use purposes. So, there's a lot of good stuff going on. And is there controversy? Absolutely, there is controversy. And in a community where you have about the same number of Democrats as Republicans and you have a lot of change and you have concern about financial ability to pay for different programs, it is natural, though not comfortable. It is natural and positive for us to have It is natural and positive for us to have robust debates about where we should put our money, say, in the transportation arena. So, so as we head into the election season, I say to the good people who are looking to sit in these offices, two things. One, every person who sits on this board, I've had passionate disagreements with in the time that we've served together, but I also know that every person who sits on this board has integrity, is working really hard to do the best they can in accordance with their values, to do right by the community. And so, so to those who would have the honor of working with some or all of this team, not me, because I'm not running, I would say, these are good people, and, and work hard to find common ground, and choose your words carefully as you, as you do your stump speech, speaking, because we're all in the same community, and we're going to need to work together. And if we're not on the same page of one issue, we might be on the same page in another, so let's try to keep the doors of communication open. Thanks.
Great. Paul?
Great. Well, I guess the, just like to mention that I know there was an article in the paper recently about a survey, and I just want to let people know that the survey that we're working on is going to be broad. It's going to cover one issue that a number of you folks have come to testify about, that was some questions related to light rail, even social services, and a number of things. So it's a broad survey, it's not solely about roads. But I was very, actually very impressed with the dialogue that's occurred since that article came out, and it's really healthy, because we really do have a road funding issue. And it's important, as we go out around the county, try to discover what those issues are for every community, what their needs are, what the problems are, and how we're spending our dollars, and do, so we can do the best, be the best stewards of those dollars, and try to figure out a way to address those needs. So I just want to let people know that it's a, it will be coming out, be a sample survey, not a sample survey, a survey going to about 400 people, but there'll be an opportunity to take that survey online at our, at our county website. Don't know when exactly, but we assume we have that available, we'll be posting that at our meeting. I do want to mention again that on next, let me see, it'd be March 7th, our community, Commissioner Roundtable, again, will be, I think, meeting number five, I believe, is an opportunity to come and bring any issues you have. It'll be held again March 7th at 5:30, Development Services Building, and we're going to be, again, try to have that happen on the first Wednesday of every month at 5:30. So there's an opportunity to come at a more convenient hour of the day, and of course, you can always come and testify here. One other thing I, I'm going to try to remember to do at least once a month, for those of you who do watch and watch us here Thursday mornings, a lot of our work is not done here on Thursday mornings, so a lot of our work sessions occur, you know, throughout the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, mostly Tuesday. But a lot of our discussions occur then, and when we're really rolling up our sleeves, working through issues, that occurs. And this is more formalizing a lot of those outcomes, and a lot of those decisions occur here on Thursday mornings. So just to let you know, there's more to it. And those are public meetings, and you can attend, and you can find those on the website, and you can attend those meetings and listen in on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. So that's all I have today.
We are going through a process of reviewing our codes and making some adjustments, and some of those things will be coming before the board over time. There's a lot. But I often hear that something's preventing something, or, you know, prevailing business opportunities, and that's the kind of thing we're trying to, that's the kind of thing we're trying to address. One thing that was suggested during the public comments is that the county's going bankrupt. I, I'd love to hear from the administrator a little bit about, sorry to put you on the spot, a little bit about the budget. We've been doing this, this is my third year, and I, every year we go through a budget process, and very few people actually attend those meetings. I'd love to have people to attend those, I'm sure we'll have notification of when those meetings are going to be. But as far as bankruptcy, make some comments?
Well, I'd like to begin by saying I do not think there's any chance of bankruptcy being at all imminent, so that's not in the cards for us, thank goodness. Perhaps that's come up because of some discussion on some of the more rural southern Oregon counties and their lack of timber funding. And it is true, there have been news stories in the Oregonian about that, and there are severe problems with certain counties. Curry is one of them, I think Josephine is another. They have very low property tax rates, in the range of 60 cents per thousand dollars assessed value. And for years, they had relied on timber harvests for their money. As restrictions began to grow on timber harvesting, particularly in federal lands, about 10 years ago, there was an act passed called the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act, federal legislation that provided money in lieu of those timber harvest dollars. That act was reauthorized once and put on a four-year step down. The last year of receiving monies is this current fiscal year. So those counties are facing a severe crisis. We're facing difficulty, but nothing like that, nothing like that crisis. Our tax rates, depending on where you live, are either $2.40, $2.40 per thousand, or $2.97 per thousand. So that gives us, which is actually right in about the norm or average for county property tax rates, that gives us a reasonable cushion. Property taxes are not volatile. They don't go up very fast in good times, they tend not to go down very quickly in bad times. So bankruptcy not imminent for us. If you've heard it from some other counties, perhaps that's why it's happening. Also, I would add, our budget is required to be balanced. Revenues and expenditures must match, and it is by law. We were audited regularly every year. The numbers are right, they're correct, so I'm not concerned that way. I will say, it's always difficult to encapsulate all the needs and desires and all the expectations people and groups have for the services we provide. That's part of the budget process, that starts, really starts in the fall for some of us, but it goes through the spring, and we'll be having budget hearings with the Budget Committee in late May, that's the calendar right now, leading up to approval of a budget in late May, and then adoption by the board before July 1st, which will give us spending authority for the coming fiscal year. So that's a brief overview.
Great, thank you. I wanted to mention that actually the county has 4,000 acres in forests, 1,000 in our parks, and the other 3,000 near national forests, and Jamie Damon, Commissioner Damon, and has been looking into that, discussing it with some of our other partners. But our 3,000 acres actually support our Parks District, and we recently had a sale. We really have a fantastic program that, you know, supports our Parks District and, and manages a forest in, in a 50-year cycle. I'm looking forward to discussion someday at the federal level in doing similar work. ONC Counties, I'm on the Forest Land Trust Advisory Committee, and I'm the co-chair, and we're working to get people back to work in the forest, and Jamie is also working in that area, and has a, a little forest of your own.
Got my own little forest.
Your own little forest that you manage, so I'm really excited about that. And I'm excited about the Veterans Committee. I'm sorry that Mac had some questions about the membership of the committee. We actually, as a group, did go, you know, suggest people, membership to that committee, and look forward to developing that committee. We did hire a new CCSO.
VSO, Veterans Services Officer.
Another Veteran Service Officer, because we have lots of veterans coming home, many unemployed, and we're, we feel it's our obligation to make sure that those people, those veterans know what, what rights they have and what services are available to them. So I look forward to, to that group, trying to coordinate amongst state, local, and regional governments, you know, to make sure that our veterans get the services that they deserve. So we'll be looking at some new membership and look forward to that committee moving forward. And now that the chair is back, I'd be happy to turn the gavel back over to you.
The chair now doesn't know where we are. Everyone else had their comments. I just wanted to update people on where things are with the Stafford-Borland, if that has not been covered already. But last Saturday, we had the second major forum with the hamlet and area surrounding Stafford and Borland, with the Stafford Hamlet. And that one, we invited, it was about transportation, and we invited a representative from ODOT, and, and then all three of the surrounding mayors, or one of the, the mayor of Tualatin couldn't make it, so we had a city councillor from, from Tualatin. But the mayor of West Lynn was there, and the mayor of Lake Oswego was there. And I just want to, again, express my appreciation to the, the three elected officials that we had. They were very forthright in terms of addressing the issues, and, and very specific about what their transportation concerns were with regard to future planning or development in Stafford-Borland. So I think it was very helpful. I know some people who are eager to move forward with development may have viewed it as negative input, but I viewed it as really good information for us to work with and see how to go forward. So I think it was an important planning step, and, and I, I thought the, the mayors were very helpful with their information. We haven't evaluated whether or what a next forum might be. It would probably not be for another month or two, in any event, but there are several ideas about other issues to discuss that would be germane to Stafford-Borland. And then I need to announce, did you do this one already?
No.
That the Get Plugged In to the State of Clackamas County is happening on February 29 at 7:00 PM here. It is an interactive forum here in the board hearing room, and this event allows you to ask questions via email in advance or through social media the night of the event. You can get more details about this at www.clackamas.us, and I believe it is on your, your screen if you're watching right now. So we invite you to get plugged in on February 29th. And then I would like to close in, in memory of Gail Acterman, whose service is this afternoon. She was the head of Oregon's Transportation Commission, and, and served on numerous other panels, boards, commissions, and served the state of Oregon in stellar ways for pretty much her whole life. And, and we, the state of Oregon is a great loss that we don't have Gail anymore. So I want, just want to close in memory of Gail Acterman. And with that, we are adjourned.